Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, January 26th Administrative Committee Meeting. To my right is Jim Boland, to my left is John Weber, and filling in for Gary Redner is Bill Belknap, and I'm Dan Carscallen. First order of business is the approval of the January 12th, 2015 minutes.
Good one?
Good.
We'll consider him approved. Next up is the proposed Sustainable Environment Commission survey. Tom Skolorn and Keegan Caldwell will bring that forward to us.
Tom Skolorn, staff representative for the Sustainable Environment Commission. The commission has an interest in programs that are directed toward resource conservation. Therefore, they would like to do a survey of local businesses to determine what the interest in these type of programs may be, and Keegan is going to do the presentation.
So, yeah, Keegan Caldwell, the AmeriCorps Sustainability Coordinator. I'm working with the Sustainable Environment Commission as part of a task force delivered to kind of think up of ways to promote sustainability in businesses. It's kind of the thought of the SEC and this task force in particular that the city has seen really good results from the greenhouse gas inventory and the efforts that they've made, and that a good logical step forward from there would be to kind of break into the community sector by finding some sort of program to get them involved with. And so, one idea that we had was to formulate some sort of program that would promote more sustainable actions in businesses, or perhaps something more targeted like resource management. So, that being said, we didn't want to take too much of it to the design process of the program without getting any sort of input by the city businesses first. And so, we met with the Chamber of Commerce, and it was made, a recommendation was made to us to make some sort of survey that just basically asking whether or not businesses were already doing something sustainable, or something towards their resource management, and if they'd be interested in learning more about how it could save them money, or how resource management could make better business practices and things like that, and to further it in if they'd be interested into any sort of competition, or how their interests may change if the city was also involved in a similar program, and things like that. So, we put together a simple survey. It's 10 questions long, and we're going to send that out through an email listserv that's going to be provided to us by the Chamber of Commerce. It's going to be a Survey Monkey, and that way we can maintain the confidentiality of all of the users. Originally, we were just going to send an email, a PDF version of the draft of the survey, but the issue and concern was that they wouldn't be able to confidentially answer anymore. So, we've changed that format to Survey Monkey. The plan would be to then go for about a three-week period, and let the businesses respond for two weeks, and then use that third week to call and see if we've had any correspondence. Basically, just remind businesses that we sent them the survey, and then after the end of the third week, that Survey Monkey will be taken down, and the inventory will be tallied up, and we'll take all the responses and kind of formulate a business. We have a good outline of background for a program based off of something that EKLY has provided us, so between that and what the question responses come back, we can then come back to the city council and provide a, basically, a draft of a program.
Okay. You guys got anything? Jim?
I presented.
My only point is that on the first question, you want to know whether Moscow, they understand that Moscow is involved in climate mitigation. That's kind of a flash word. Do you think carbon footprint might be a little bit less?
While Keegan was talking, the thing that jumped out at me was maybe saying resource conservation, where you were, the city of Moscow is taking actions toward resource conservation. When you say towards climate mitigation, it's one of those hot-button questions because you want to get as much response as you can. You might get some people that say, "Who's got to talk about that? I'm not going to answer it," you know, that kind of thing. It's like John and I were talking earlier, it's like you don't make a survey where you ask the question, "Are you still beating your wife?"
Yeah.
You know, that's kind of leading to the, I mean, "No, I'm not," but you don't get the chance to say, "I never was," so that type of thing. So, I think that's the key there. That way, you're more neutral in your asking, you know, you want to stay a lot more neutral, I think. I think the rest of it, though, looks pretty good.
Yeah, having read all of the-
That was the only thing that really was steering in a direction that maybe you just wanted to stay more in a neutral direction.
Yeah. And we will put this Survey Monkey up after, given approval, that there'll still probably be another week or so to make any sort of changes to those questions, so anything else that could be brought forward later can also be done, and we can make those changes before it goes up.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with recommending this for approval with some changes. Do we want to bring it back to committee or to full council before we go ahead and approve it, or do you think we could have that on consent with those changes?
If it's only that one change to the wording on that single question, they can continue on with that revision.
Okay, we'll go ahead and put that on consent, then. If someone wants to pull it, we'll see you next Monday, and you might get to say something or you might not.
All right.
All right. But, yeah, I think we'll forward it for approval in the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next up is electronic signatures and record retention, and Rod Hall is going to talk to us about that.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
The resolution before you is about allowing the city to use electronic signatures, and at some point to be able to use electronic or record retention when that capacity is available to the city. Under Idaho Code, each city is allowed to determine whether and to what extent it will ascend except electronic records and use electronic signatures to and from other parties. Being that the convenience and low cost of conducting business over the Internet has potential to increase efficiencies in all businesses, including government business, and technological advances and an increase in the number of people using computers as part of everyday business will only continue to increase. The benefits of using electronic signatures and electronic records can reduce the use of paper, save time, and reduce costs associated with handling physical documents. This resolution would authorize the city, as per the Idaho Code, to develop policies for each department as the need or practicality arises regarding the use of electronic signatures and electronic records retention. And any policy that would be implemented by the city would have to comply with requirements of the Idaho Uniform Electronic Transaction Act. That act was enabled, or Idaho's Uniform Electronic Transaction Act enacted the model legislation that was approved by the National Conference of Commissioners on Uniform State Laws more than a dozen years ago. It was designed to support the use of electronic commerce, and the primary objective was to establish the legal equivalence of electronic records and signatures with paper writings and written signatures, and removing barriers to electronic commerce.
John?
Just to make sure that I understand what you're talking about, this would be using, for example, the same type of signature I used today when I paid my phone bill?
Not necessarily. This would be, there's a lot of complications in whether to accept electronic signatures or not. There's a difference between digital signatures and electronic signatures. Digital signatures have an attribute in them that you can identify which person did that. You know, there's enough stuff that's in the code, and where it comes from, and the system, the program that they use, that you can identify the person that actually did that. Electronic signature is just says that if a person intended it to be their signature, and that was their act that they pushed the button, it becomes their signature. It's basically like making an X, saying that X is your signature. I don't know how you would prove that somebody, you know, didn't fraudulently do it on behalf of somebody else, but the whole idea is to make it easy for more people to use it. And how you would determine if somebody wanted to contest that that was their signature, that they didn't intend to do that, you would look at all the circumstances that surrounded, all the communications, anything that showed leading up to that that was their agreement. And so, the more secure it is, the more easier it is to prove, but you'd be able to prove it just by using the totality of the circumstances surrounding that transaction.
And any part of city business using this technology now? Do you use electronic signature for documents that you send?
No, we don't have the authority. Right now, probably would come out of maybe Bills Department would be the first ones that would probably take advantage of it, you know, when people come in and apply for building permits or something, allow people to do stuff online.
So, currently, is it okay to use, for instance, if you get a contract via email or whatever, PDF format or whatever, and you print that and sign it, and then scan it and send it back in, is that acceptable? Where it has the actual signature, but you don't have the actual paper, you can't?
Typically, currently, for city contracts. So, city contracts and agreements with other third-party vendors, whether it's a professional service or a construction contract, we do maintain signed originals. We do scan for just ease of public access and sharing those documents, but we always maintain one of the signed original copy. So, that's our current process. Probably where this would come up more often, and part of this came from our department, was looking for that ability to be able to issue, for individuals to be able to apply for and issue building permits online entirely, and not having the opportunity for them to sign the permit applications required underneath the building code that they could check a box and signify that that's their signature when they hit submit and apply for that, and that we could accept that underneath city policy. So, that's probably one of the primary issues we're looking at, and secondarily, as we get to record storage and retention long-term, as we develop a document management system to be able to store those records at the council's discretion electronically.
So, you're also accepting the fees in the same way, or is that something you're going to bill for after?
We are. They have the capability today to pay online. But what we are doing on a few of those, most of the applications we get tend to be commercial, gas, mechanical, electrical, although we do expect that to expand. But right now, they're actually submitting an application online, and they were printing out a permit, faxing it to them, they're signing that, faxing it back to us, and then we say it's okay, they can go back in-line and pay that, the fee that's due. This would take out-
Trying to save a few steps, save a couple pieces of paper.
Correct.
And there's only one thing that on, in this resolution on number 3A through H, any policy that gets developed would have to incorporate those into that policy, those required in the law. And I do, I would probably recommend to make a change on number H to clarify, where it says that if the law requires a record to be sent, communicated, or transmitted by methods specified in the law, then the parties must follow the other law requirement. I would just propose taking out the other law requirement and just put the word "that." That might clarify that just a little bit. That's not a major thing, doesn't affect anything.
Well, it looks like if something that's going to help streamline things a little bit, I don't have a problem with it, you know, we're-
I'd recommend we forward it.
There's all kinds of reduction in paperwork things that people are trying to do, so-
We can do that and save some time.
And postage and-
Yeah.
Fax paper, whatever. Consent, or as a resolution, should we?
A resolution could be on consent, but I probably would recommend this go on-
Let's go ahead and put it on there.
This may be our only rigor gen item.
Let's do it, then.
Right now, so I think we'll place this one on rigor.
Sounds like a plan.
I'll send it to you electronically.
Okay. Be sure to sign it, Rod. Thanks, Rod. Next up, we're going to get a report about the farmer's market from Kathleen Burns. I don't see Erin here to help you today.
No, but she might be coming still.
Okay.
So, I made you guys some physical copies.
Okay.
To follow along, might help a little bit. What? Yeah. So, you notice it doesn't say year-end report. It is a year-end report, but it's also a market metrics report, and I'm going to explain that as we go farther into this.
Okay.
So, and all of these photographs are Alison Meyer. She takes a lot of photographs at the market and lets us have the right to use them, so it's pretty exciting. So, these are some of the partners that we identify and sponsors with the market. New St. Andrews, of course, for the restrooms. The Chamber of Commerce answers a lot of questions and directs people to the market. We had the Heal Grant this year with Regent's Blue Shield Foundation, and these are two different dietitians that came and volunteered their time to cook and do prepping at the market with the Kids Passport Program. And then the extension came to the market. Moscow Pullman Daily News features a what-to-do every Friday and Saturday in the paper. Inland Northwest Broadcasting has been working with, you know, announcements for music, and Gina did a market report every Friday about what items were in the market, whether strawberries were in, and that was broadcast. And we'd like to say thanks to the downtown businesses because they've been more supportive of the market being in front of their store places. The Farmer's Market Commission gives a lot of time, and then the three radio stations. We have Backyard Harvest, who facilitates the EBT at the market, and then also collects produce for the food banks every Saturday. And then we have AmeriCorps, our federal sponsor. These are some of the people that participated in the market. We list all the musicians, different groups around town. The Farmer's Market poster had about 20-something entries for that, the canning demo, the Heal Grant. We did the feed study this year, which was the last of our metrics. The Moscow Engineering Department was there with their construction projects to alert the public on what was happening with roads and curbs. Then we had various commissions with the city that spent time at the city tent to discuss their commissions and what they do in the city. We had the Bike Fest and the Pride Ride through the Park and Rec Department. Master Gardeners were involved. Lake Tahoe County Human Rights Day. The American Legion participated this year with Honoring Flag Day. And then they gave demonstrations on how to fold a flag, preserve a flag, take care of a flag, retire a flag. And then we have Idaho Fish and Migratory Bird Day. We had the Food Drive, and then we also had the police that came and discussed how to do prescription drug take-back program. So, some of the improvements we had in the market is we had the Ball Canning Grant, the High Five Passport Program, and the Heal Grant, the over-the-street banners that went up, picnic tables and umbrellas. This year, we're going into a full-time AmeriCorps position versus a half-time. Policy and procedures reviewed by the legal department, the Manage My Market software system, I'll go into that. The Farmer's Market Commission, it was their second year of engagement into the market. We also had the Zip to Water, compliments of the Chamber of Commerce and the City Water Department. We developed a vendor of the week program, and we had our pilot beer and wine sales at the market, and there's Lucas from Moscow Brewery. And then we also took number-one farmer's market in the state of Idaho for the fourth year in a row from the American Farmland Trust, and that's from patrons in the market voting for their favorite market. So, these are your numbers and your stats. I won't go line by line, but this is from the Ball Canning Grant. We did have an initial $1,200 check from the grant, and then we gained $550 worth of prizes. And then all the other supplies that they sent us, you can see Barry there with SEAL Program, and then we had everything from the jars, product, canners, a variety of different things that they sent us for supplies. This is the money that we set out for advertisement. It's probably getting to be one of our biggest budgets. This year, we advertised with $1,984 with Mom's Weekend, and that was a huge success. And actually, WSU is now doing video content of the Moscow Farmer's Market for visitors coming into WSU, and we saw that this fall with football games and such. But there is a copy of our over-the-street banners in last year's poster contest. This is our, DJ did this page of social media. She's in charge of all the social media for the market and all the different media outlets that we use for the market, from Yelp, TripAdvisor, Visit Idaho. We're on Visit Idaho's sites, and we update all of that. And we started out with 50 Facebook fans, and as of January 20th, we're up to 2,284. And then Barry tweets and posts photographs every Saturday that get uploaded to the Facebook and then get tweeted out to all these followers. So, that's been a really good tool for marketing. This is our Manage My Market software program. DJ and Barry pretty much check all of the forms, releases, surveys, risk assessment forms, everything gets dropped into this, as well as fees that have been paid. So, this is our kind of receptacle for all the paperwork. So, we just wanted to let you know how much was being generated for the market. So, this kind of shows the behind-the-scenes processing of paperwork and registration and everything. So, we put some numbers to that. This is our commission. Erin Carroll came, so we'll hear from Erin in a little bit, but this is just a wrap-up of the commission. Nine members, 13 meetings, average meeting was two hours, so there's 234 volunteer hours just from the commission alone with our meetings. And then they also volunteered with during vendors, and then also volunteering at the market, days when the commission was actually at the market. And then Shirley Green and several other commission members took on the homecoming parade, and we had our farmer's market float in the parade. So, people put a lot of time to homecoming as well. This is just a backup of how many, how much communication goes on prior to Market Day on an average week. And there's just about, usually, when Barry put these numbers together, there's usually 65 texts, plus or minus 10, 80 to 85 emails from 40-plus vendors, 10 weekly phone calls, five hours pre-Market Day. That's all before the day of Saturday. And then there's constant communication, nine hours worth on the day of the market. So, that's just a little background of what we're doing prior to Market Day. These are your numbers from Backyard Harvest and the Shop the Market Program, EBT. They're down a little slightly, 14 to 13. The average EBT sales per month is right around 365.73. The total for the year was 9,509. They had some matched dollar money from a grant, and that increased it an additional $4,872 to a total of $14,399, plus a remainder of 18 from 13 that was paid out to our farmers and producers, just in EBT sales, food stamp sales. Then also, at the end of every Market Day, we collect produce for the food bank, and they calculated 535 pounds were collected for our food banks.
Over the year?
Mm-hmm, over the season. So, that's just some numbers for you.
On the EBT sales, is the market handling that for everyone, then? So, if someone, they can bring, get something from a booth and take it down there and run their card all at the same, at the same time?
Actually, what happens is people bring their card, and Backyard Harvest has a table in our city tent, and they have all the electronic computer equipment, and they run the card there, and then we give them market tokens, and then people go out and shop in the market, and then the tokens are then brought back to the booth.
By the vendors.
And then the vendors are reimbursed the token money. So, that's how it's done. And we don't run that money through the city because that's commodity, and it's run through Backyard Harvest, so they keep track of all those numbers.
So, there's certain items in the market that aren't eligible for EBT sales?
Correct.
So, you have to keep track of which vendors are EBT eligible?
Right. And we, well, we educate the vendors on what's able to be sold by EBT, and they get an update every year. So, when I go into my metrics report, I'll give you numbers and counts of what items in the market are eligible for EBT. So, these are our vendor fees that we collected. It's broken down into seasoned vendors and walk-on vendors. This is the money they pay for their stall fees, whether it's a truck space, a kids' space, music busker's space, seasoned vendor, walk-on vendor. That's the breakdown right there of what we collected. Then, this year was the first year where we had a mandatory sales reporting at the market, and you can see the difference between 13 and 14, the difference of mandatory versus optional. And we did, we're working on 72.58% compliance, which is pretty high so far. And we have some outliers out there that we're working on to get their reports in because if they don't submit their report, they're not eligible to participate in the market, and that's per policy. So, then I called the State Tax Commission, and I said, "Okay, if we have $1 million worth of sales, what does that equate into tax revenue for the state of Idaho?" So, she gives me the figure at the bottom, $60,367.87.
And how much of that comes back here?
I have no idea. So, that's a question for Bill.
Bill doesn't know either.
Whatever they decide down the boys' chute, that's how much we get.
So, here's the other thing that it's a positive and a negative. You know, we tax food in Idaho, so we don't have to break that down because all of that is being taxed. Where in Washington State, they have to break these figures down via produce that's non-taxed, food that's non-tax, versus hard goods. So, anyway, we're getting there, and we're doing a better job this year than the previous year. So, here's your financial recap. You know, everybody wants to know, what are you subsidizing from the city, from your general fund for the market, you know, your taxpayer money?
So, right off the top, we collected $38,526 in fees, but you show revenue of $39,148, so there's about-
And that's because of the grant money.
So, there's $600 and some dollars?
From grant money, some sponsorship money, yep. And I apologize, I should have had another line item there to break it down. But we did go up a little bit. Our staff expenses went down a little bit because we're getting more proficient with Main Street. And then the $12,000, that was equipment and music and replacement costs for some materials. Then you go into, I asked the police what it costs them, whether it's towing cars, impound, restrooms, various things that the police do. The water department estimated about eight hours to work with drinking fountains. We have two drinking fountains. Engineering services, they work on blueprinting, mapping, mapping of vendors for the market. Park and Rec give us the garbage guys, which is daily. Street Department, that dollar amount went down because now we're doing our own bollards and setting up our own closure as our own staff. We don't rely on the street department to close the streets anymore. The fire department went up a little bit, and that's because we have more food vendors in the market that need to be inspected, whether it's for tent weights, or fire extinguishers, or oil storage, or however people are cooking. And then I subsetted out the contracts. We now have a contract with Backyard Harvest for $1,500 to facilitate the EBT, and then the balance of that is our AmeriCorps contract for Amanda. So, there's your indirect costs, and this is how Don Palmer was here, set this up. This is our breakdown. But the bottom line is, you're pretty much subsidized in this market by $24,446.
But less than before.
But less than before because we're getting a little more efficient with time and materials. John, do you have a question? You're looking like you have a question.
John, did you have a question?
Question?
No.
Oh, okay.
It just always looks like that.
Okay, all right.
No, but we didn't have any EBT last year, our contract with Backyard Harvest?
Yeah, it was 1,500, too.
And then the AmeriCorps, we didn't have that last year?
We only had a halftime in AmeriCorps. That expense went up a little bit.
But you don't show it in last year?
No, because I grouped, you see a zero there, because I grouped that last year up in expenses.
Program expenses.
Yeah, and I had that hidden in there, that dollar amount, and this year- Yeah, and I had that hidden in there, that dollar amount, and this year I chose to break it out.
Okay.
Just like next year, I'll break out the grant revenue versus the hard cost revenue.
Okay.
Okay. So then these are your city services and what they do for the market. Because the market doesn't just live in the arts department, there's other city departments that have a lot to do with the market. So I just kind of broke down different jobs that people have to support the market. And of course, the art department does the most because we're the front line for the market. But all these other departments, police, legal, water department, engineering, administration, park and rec, street department, and fire department all help out the market. So I don't want to ever not show that. So then this is where we went into the metrics. We found out about, the Farmer's Market Coalition and the USDA was starting a national report on farmer's markets. And we got a copy of all the questions and we started, DJ, myself, and Barry and Amanda started looking at the questions and realizing that we had a lot of answers to these questions. So they're kind of broken down into economics, capital, social. But average total spending per shopper, per visit, twenty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Total vendor sales, a million plus. Sales tax revenue, sixty thousand plus. Dollar spent at neighboring businesses by market shoppers, that equated to about eighteen fifty.
That's pretty good when you're...
Yep.
Two-thirds of what you spend at the market, they're spending at a downtown business.
Yeah, they're spending more money, yep. And then these, you can see, were broken down into subsets. So we'll end up sending this report back to the USDA and they'll drop our numbers into their numbers. And it shows you the audience that's interested in all these numbers. So three hundred and seventy market seasonal employees and this is how many people are hired by the vendors that actually work with markets. So like Tonamaker can hire up to fifteen people out of Moscow to work on Saturdays. The Barry guy from Hermiston hires three people.
From here?
Yep, mm-hmm. So when we, we went into our Manage My Market and looked at our survey and then totaled these numbers and these were the numbers that were in the Manage My Market system. So there's roughly three hundred and seventy market seasonal employees. Now, they might only work four hours of Saturday, but they're, they're an employee count because those vendors are paying them to work for them in their booths. And then we looked at year-round employment for, you know, how many people work year-round with their farms and produce and orchards. And it's one forty-nine point five year-round employees. So then we looked at number of vendors who sold through the market at least once per year and that equated to a hundred and thirty-two. So then the next slide is more metrics and it gets into capital. So we broke it down to produce vendor sales is what they wanted. That's what the USDA wants. So we took out that year-end report and broke it out into produce, which is five hundred and forty-three thousand plus. Average number of visitors per market day, roughly six thousand three hundred and forty-two. Average number of SNAP transactions per month, we had that, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Total dollar amount of SNAP benefits redeemed annually, fourteen thousand three ninety-nine. Number of EBT customers that participated in the incentive campaign. And that was the summer and that was a hundred percent participated in that. And that was a Finney grant that was like a double up bucks. So if you came in with your EBT card and swiped it for ten dollars, you could get five additional market bucks. And that was a grant that Backyard Harvest received. So a hundred percent of the EBT users use that because it brought more money for them as a customer for purchasing power. And then we asked Backyard Harvest, number of SNAP EBT customers that are more than one market day and they figured eighty percent were returnees. Twenty percent were just roughly one-time visitors to the market with EBT. And then we added up all the different things you could buy in the market that are in compliance, Jim, what you were talking about, and there's roughly sixty to sixty-five items. Now, we didn't count each type of apple or each type of peach.
We're just talking produce.
We're talking produce, we're talking chicken, we're talking beef, we're talking butter, we're talking milk, we're talking eggs, we're talking bread.
No, so if one vendor had milk, eggs, and bread, that's three?
Three items.
And if so, but I've got vegetables, but I've got all these, that's one?
No. So radishes, lettuce, onions, potatoes, those are items. And so we broke it down and we pretty much think we have sixty to sixty-five items at the market that EBT can be used to purchase.
So each individual, not type of apple, but?
Yep. An apple would be one, plums would be one, even though there might be five varieties. No, we didn't break it.
We didn't break it down to varieties?
We didn't. We could do a better job on this number, but we were able to come up with that number with Backyard Harvest, Barry, myself.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to get too detailed with it.
Ah, so this was another number that they wanted, number or percentage of women-owned producer businesses selling at least once at the market. And we broke this down, thirty-seven plus percent of market vendors are women, twenty-seven percent of market vendors are women partners in a business. And that's a number that the USDA Economic Development, they want to track that.
Do those overlap?
No.
Okay.
Uh-uh.
The thirty-seven point eight is just...
Sole, sole.
Women are the principal.
Yep, they're the principal.
And twenty-seven are a part of another enterprise.
Right, mm-hmm. So we broke that down from our Manage My Market. And then they asked a number of socially disadvantaged vendors. We only have two. That's what we know of right now. Those are people that might be on fixed income or disability or...
Retiree?
No, that's not a retiree. So, because they're not necessarily socially disadvantaged.
But they're of fixed income.
Yeah, so we're gonna, this might include retirees because we do have a lot of retirees, but we, when we looked at socially disadvantaged by USDA...
There's only two, there's probably not.
We looked at their definition and we went with their definition. So then, number of farm vendors with organic certification, we only have two, one Washington, one Idaho.
No, we're not limiting that in any way.
No, we're not. That's just people that have done their paperwork.
Okay.
Number of products sold as certified organic or certified by other third party.
So those two, don't sell all those one-twenty either?
Pretty much.
They do, they sell all the hundred-and-twenty items, those just those two?
That are certified organic by USDA.
Okay.
Right.
They're busy.
They're very busy people. This was a little difficult, but we nailed it. Average distance and miles traveled from product origin, i.e. the farm, to market. This is our average, which was twenty-eight miles. So we looked at all the vendors in the market that had produce and that was the average miles traveled.
And how many vendors? Was it one thirty?
No, there's a...
One hundred and thirty-two?
Yeah, but if we, well, yeah, because that has walk-ons on it, too. Walk-on produce vendor.
In the mileage?
Uh-huh. That's your average. Now, we have some people that are a hundred and thirty-two.
Right, you might have somebody that's across the street.
But that's not your average. This is your average.
Right.
Yep. So this includes people coming from Pomeroy, Dayton, north, yep. So then we added up the acres that people were working and it was two thousand two thirty-five eleven, because most of these productions are small.
And that's total acres?
That's total. And the largest farm is Tonamaker's with sixty acres.
That's the largest single farm, it's only sixty acres?
In our, in our, yeah. So then, average hours from harvest to point of sale, roughly twelve hours. Percentage of vendors at market less than thirty-five years old, this is a number that they want. Are we growing young people in businesses?
What's your caveat?
Eighteen percent. So we, we pulled that number off of our Need Feed Seed that we did. So we are able to track that. Number of volunteer hours, this is in Amanda, fifty-five volunteers, thirty-two days, a hundred and eighty-one point five hours. And the value, when she gave her volunteer value, that's three thousand six fifteen. So then, percentage of shoppers with different zip codes, there you go. Most of our shoppers are Moscow, second to that is Pullman, and then all others is pretty much the Valley. We had our pounds of food donated, five hundred and thirty-five pounds. Type of educational materials, we didn't have enough room. But we give out recipe cards, the Idaho Farmer's Market Guide from the State Department of Ag, the entertainment schedule comment cards, upcoming events, our department workshops. We give out a lot of material at the city tent because that's where you get your information. So then they wanted to know what were the three top-selling fruits and three top-selling vegetables. So we looked that up and there you have it, strawberries, tomatoes, and apples, onions, potatoes, and leafy greens. So then they wanted to know youth under eighteen. We have seven different youth families registered where they paid their registration fees, got all their paperwork in.
And that's a vendor?
A child vendor, yep. We did sixteen cooking demonstrations this summer. We had eighteen vendors provide product for those cooking demonstrations. So then you go into the percentages here. This is the makeup of our vendors, where they come from. This is just what they want to know. So we broke it all down for them and for us and for you. You know, where are these people coming from that vend in the market? So that's a lot to absorb, it's a lot of data, but we work on getting data. So this is our Farmer's Market poster from last year, Carrie Lynn Kaiser. She was a WSU graphic arts student. Mm-hmm, so we'll have another poster contest this year. And then we're just going to close with a couple fun photographs from Allison Minor of some of our customers. And there's a great example of a child vendor and different folks shopping in some of your crowds.
Seasoned vendors are there for all twenty-six weeks?
Not always. Some of them, if they don't have product yet, they don't show up till June.
But they pay for...
They pay the whole season.
And then walk-ons come in?
Pay per day, yep. So we'll, we'll put this report online and keep your copy.
Erin, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I apologize for being late.
That's okay.
Got here as quickly as I could, safely, and abiding by all laws.
Of course.
The Farmer's Market Commission will be adding more to this slide after Kathleen's very thorough presentation about what we've been working on and going over some of the recommendations that we're making to city council as it relates to policy changes and also just as it relates to recommendations that we made to Kathleen and Barry about management and basic functions.
Operations.
Operations of the market. And then any additional topics that we still have on the table, inviting council members to come to our meetings if they have some input on those. And so I was asked to bring some talking points today to go over if you want to hear some of those recommendations in advance and we'll be sending those out to the council prior to the meeting so they can review those as well.
Sure, I mean, if you want to throw a couple out there, that's great.
Sure. So the majority of our time, we focused on two things primarily, one on community and patron experience because we know that everyone loves our market.
Right.
It's very well-attended, as all of those numbers showed, and then connecting people with the creator. And then the other thing was making city staff more efficient and hopefully more sane in the process. So I would say overall, those are some of our larger goals. One of the first things that we wanted to do was to create some values for our market. We have a mission statement within our policy manuals that's, that's helpful, but not necessarily as thorough in helping us make decisions. And we felt like it would help not only the commission, but also council in looking at what's important for us when we're thinking about new policies or when somebody comes with a request for change or whatever that is. So we wanted some kind of guiding values. So one thing we created, which we'd like to have put into our market policies are the core values of the market, and I can briefly go over those. The first one being access, the Farmer's Market provides access to local foods, unique goods, and their producers. Second being economic opportunity, if you've seen all those numbers. Moscow Farmer's Market contributes to the greater Moscow economy by providing economic opportunities with emphasis on assisting local, small, independently-owned, and startup enterprises. Third one being community, the Moscow Farmer's Market builds community by welcoming all residents and visitors, providing safe space and opportunity for community engagement, interaction, and enrichment. And then lastly, the fourth one being information, the Moscow Farmer's Market increases awareness of and provides information about and in support of health and wellness practices, regional agricultural sustainability, and sound environmental practices. And we feel like none of these are adding to anything that we do, but they actually encompass all that we do. So that's something we'd like to see. In addition, a lot of them are, like I said, operational-based, one of them being truck space fees. We noticed that in our policies, they only applied to produce vendors, so it didn't allow our managers to charge other vendors for bringing trucks into the market. So we wanted to make that clear, that that was for anyone bringing a truck to the market and make it consistent across vendors. We wanted to add a jurying process to our value-added products. Currently, we have them for our prepared foods. We go through a jurying process to make sure that they contribute to our market and they're delicious and people would buy them. And we want to make a similar process for our value-added products, our crafting products, to make sure, again, that we're increasing the diversity and bringing products that people like. The next one was a recommendation to continue on with the sales of beer, wine, and hard cider within the market. We felt like that that was fairly well-received during our testing period last year, so our recommendation was to proceed with getting that into the market for the next season. Cleaning up the child vendor process and location, you saw that we have a number of them in our market and that number's been growing, which is a good thing, but also causes operational problems. So we actually recommended that they follow the same process as our walk-ons and just notify the market manager so we can make sure we have space for the children, because the worst thing to do to a child that comes all-prepared is to tell them we don't have space for them. And nobody wants to make a child cry on a market day. So we recommended that we just get notifications so we make sure we have room for them. And we proposed that we move them down Main Street at the, on the west side of Main Street, or on the west side down the sixth, near Sixth Street. So they're still all in one location, getting to be near each other, making sure that they still have the same supervision that they do in their current location, but that allows for more space. Where we currently have them, we can only fit comfortably three to four and we've had quite a few Saturdays where we have more than that, we need more space. We recommended to remove some percentages that were in our policy manuals. We had percentages listed for the breakdown of our vendors. You saw there how many produce vendors we had versus our value-added. And in our policy, we were asked to put those in, and Kathleen has better history on this than I do, for the purposes of our EBT, for using EBT in our market. EBT no longer requires those percentages, so we'd like to have them removed from the policy since we don't have to follow them and we're not following them. They're just useless numbers at this point in time. We made a recommendation to change the traffic management street closing time to help Barry clear the streets and get safe pedestrian access to the market in the morning. We recommended that there are no fee changes for this year because after talking to Kathleen and other city staff members, we were not aware of any increasing needs, that we would need to increase vendor fees this year. We made a recommendation, although it doesn't change policy, to limit buskers to four per market time or at any given time, there can only be four buskers. And if you don't know what a busker is, those are the jugglers and the saxophone players and the music ensembles that play on the corner, which people seem to love, but we were running out of places to put people.
So do you treat that as a walk-on vendor?
Yeah.
Yep.
They pay a fee and fill out an application as well.
Okay, so and then once, once number four is there, Banjo Joe has to come next week then, just be there earlier, I guess, huh?
Yeah, or they talk to another busker. Very rarely do our buskers stay from open to close.
Oh, I see.
They will play for a few hours and go home and so they might kind of create an inter-busker system to share some spaces or they'll open up throughout the market day. But speaking with Barry, he thought that this was very manageable, but he didn't have any enforceable way to say, you can't do it.
Right.
But we had some placement issues with really loud music next to certain vendors and we just needed, they needed some more flexibility to be able to do that. Lastly, we gave some recommendations to staff also about the mandatory orientation that our vendors go through. There's certain information that's helpful just... There's certain information that's helpful just to newcomers, new vendors, and there's certain information that everybody needs to have, so we're trying to separate those to make it more efficient for both people. Um, so we're not asking for too much time. Uh, last year, if you remember, we were asked to review adding language to our policies to allow for interns or employees to sell, not just the producer. And we talked about that at great length. Joanne and David can speak to that as well. And we did not make any recommendations to add that language. After reviewing standard practices for other farmer's markets, we felt like it was still important for people to talk to the producers or the numerous people who are listed as allowed to sell in our market. So we did not create a recommendation to change that this year. And then one item that is still in review is the distance farm size requirements, which of course, we all remember that conversation from last year and continued forward and we're still looking at ways to talk about, um, what local really means and how we're promoting, uh, local business, not only here in Moscow, but our agricultural business and making sure the products are, um, of sound practice and getting those to our patrons in an efficient manner. So that's something that's still on the table.
Well, with your less than thirty mile average distance, that means, you know, with, uh, I mean, what's our longest, a hundred and fifty?
One sixty-five.
I mean, with that being your longest, that, that means there's a lot of closer stuff that's to, to bring that average down, that, that low. So, I mean, it seems like a non-issue really, but, you know, who's to say if somebody as big as that hundred and sixty-five miler comes in that's closer than, you know, well.
And we've been looking at things besides mileage, because the conversations last year, um, were about where are these numbers coming from? What is the definition of local? And we get that mileage is, is a difficult thing to use. So we've been working with Art and Kathleen and Cinda Williams on our commission of trying to become up, come up with other solutions, like looking at biogeographical regions or looking at farms that do a certain percentage of direct market sales rather than wholesale or the size of their farm based on what they grow. And we're trying to be creative about it, but that's also why we don't have a recommendation this year, is we want to have something that's sustaining and that's well thought out and easy to implement.
It's not fun to make policy changes every year.
No. No. We tried this year to really make policy changes that make everyone's life easier and I think we were very successful. And even our values, uh, that our policy subcommittee worked on, uh, for a very long time is really to make our job easier. And so it's something we can always go back to and think about, does this policy support our values?
I noticed that you said that, uh, you don't recommend any fee changes.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's nothing happening that would necessitate that. Well, we on the city council have been given the, uh, job of coming up with a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a public restroom. And, uh, that public restroom will probably be used, I would say, from the farmer's market and the number of people that come every week by farmer's market, uh, attendees, probably for fifty percent of all of the use of that bathroom. And that being the case, uh, and since the members that come in to sell their product are here to make a profit, um, there's going to be a discussion about raising the fees.
Yeah, I look forward to the discussion. We've heard snippets about that after we made this recommendation, but nobody's brought it to the commission with what recommendations or enough information to even say yay or nay at this point. So we'd love to, to weigh in on that conversation. I feel like it's really important that our commission does. We need to see the numbers of usage, not only for the market, cause we're familiar with those numbers, but all the other downtown events that happen. As well as other businesses, a lot of our businesses don't have restrooms that are open to the public, so on a daily basis, those are going to be used by the public. And so I think we'd want to make sure that if there was any impact to the farmer's market, specifically the vendor fees, that it's equitable to the use and that it goes through our commission for an educated recommendation. But love to have you come and talk to us about what that might look like.
So the other thing that Farmer's Market Commission is looking at is there's, um, language in the Moscow Arts Commission for fundraising and, uh, the Farmer's Market Commission is looking at, um, some sponsorship and fundraising. The example they're looking at is the Pullman Farmer's Market has their music sponsored by the Washington State Credit Union. So, um, we're looking at, um, making some changes to the Farmer's Market Commission. And that was another thing is we generally spend somewhere close to three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars in music and that could lower an operating cost.
Well, anything that brings that subsidized number closer to zero.
Yep.
Is something that, that I know the council would be in favor of.
Right.
When do your packets go out for your vendors?
March.
So we've got basically, gonna start seeing some stuff through the next month.
Mm-hmm.
Getting things put together.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
As far as the, the restroom thing that John brings up, um, when we have a, a concrete number on what that facility's going to cost, then it will be easier to, to go out and say, well, you, if you use, if you're fifty percent of the use of this facility, then how can we prorate that and help pay for it that way? But you, you have to have a, have to have a concrete number before you can prorate it. So soon, when we get down to that point, I'm sure they'll be receptive to, I'm, I'm sure, as a, I was a vendor at Farmer's Market for seven years and maybe again, and I would have been most happy to help subsidize that.
And I, yeah, and I, I mean, like I said, we focus on the patron experience and finding a public restroom is part of the patron experience.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, so it's not that we're disinterested, we just want to be part of the conversation. If you don't mind me asking, what's the timeline on that project? How, what are we looking at for, um, needing to raise those funds? Is that something that would have to happen this market season?
Um, I think Bill can give us a better idea of the timeline.
Well, I think at this point in time, there's not a defined schedule. They're going to report on the design, so the council, I think, authorized the continuation of the project to, I think, authorized up to ten thousand dollars for the design of the restroom facility. Um, once that's complete, then I think it's anticipated that we would look at grant opportunities and other funding opportunities for that facility. So it's not, I mean, it's not going to happen for this season.
No, it won't be this summer.
I'd say maybe the following year at the soonest.
Great.
Yeah. And it, you know, it, ground, you know, if, if everything lines up, maybe groundbreaking this fall, but probably after the farmer's market season.
Okay.
I mean, uh, there's a belief that there was possibly some USDA grant funding that could contribute to that facility and so I'm sure that, uh, will be reviewed and researched and, um.
You know, and it may not be a, we're gonna have you pay for all this year. It might be, you know, an incremental bit that, okay, this is the amount that is, you know, and until this sun sets, then goes to whatever the next thing we want the farmer's market to pay for itself for, you know. Who's to say? I mean, there's all sorts of creative ways it can be used, so.
Yeah, and I, thank you for mentioning the fundraising. Our hope for that is to help with some of those sustaining costs, even just little things like the wagons. If you want to sponsor a wagon and have it be the Carscalle wagon for the market season, then go right ahead, but.
A dollar wagon.
Hoping that we can have people know exactly where their money's going and how it contributes to making the market better. And so we've been crafting a really intentional plan to make that fundraising effective and sustainable.
Cool.
One of the numbers that, um, on the sales tax revenue at sixty thousand dollars, that's just a direct market number, right? It doesn't include the sales tax from the purchases that are made downtown in already existing businesses.
That's just market sales.
Yeah, when I called the tax commission, we just went off of the, the million dollar number that was reported.
Right.
So it could even be more than that.
It could be more.
Or it likely is more.
It causes more sales to be made downtown. Some of that contributes to the sales tax revenue.
Right.
We just don't know, it'd be nice to know how much of that comes back to this community because that, that's, that's where the discrepancy is. You know, we're subsidizing to, in the two, the twenty-four thousand dollars. If we get more than that back in terms of sales tax revenue, then it's a net zero thing, even though it.
I don't think it's twenty thousand bucks.
Yeah, probably isn't.
It might, it might be, it's gonna chip a little bit off of that, that's for sure.
Well, I know that in the state of Washington, they can get a figure down to the penny. We can't do that here because the state legislature decides where the money goes and that can be changed yearly.
Yep.
So.
But there's a total sales tax number.
You can probably look back.
And we get a certain percentage of that. So you can take the, this and prorate that based on what our percentage was from the state to come up with a pretty close number.
But our percentage can change from year to year.
Oh, no doubt.
But we could always look back though, see what it was.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks Kathleen, thanks Erin.
Thank you.
Bill, we got anything else for the good of the order?
That's it for the afternoon.
I think we had one other person that wanted to speak.
Does somebody else, absolutely, if you want to come up and speak some more towards this, that'd be great. Just introduce yourself and tell where you live.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Kadlec, K-A-D-L-E-C for the record.
Okay.
Um, I'm here representing the Rotary Club of Moscow.
Okay.
And as such, we're also a walk-on vendor to the Saturday market. And we're the only all-volunteer vendor at the market. And we, and we do want to, uh, we do appreciate, want to thank the art department as well as, uh, the farmer's market for allowing us to be a part of the market. We never realized the impact on the citizenry until those weekends when we were in other communities, um, they were coming up to the market saying, where is the Rotary kettle corn? So, um, we're a little surprised by that and, um, but do appreciate that as well and we will be back this year.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks for the delicious kettle corn.
That was a very, uh, informative letter that was, uh, in the packet.